Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, June the 21st, 2018. The time is 7:01 PM. This is the regular city council meeting, city of Leander, Texas. We're glad that you're all here. If you'll please rise for invocation. I want to ask Pastor Mark Brown with Faith City Church to come up and lead us in prayer, please. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight. We give you all the glory and we give you all the honor, Father, that you are the prince of peace, the rose of selling, the lily of the valley, the bright and morning star. We ask that your guidance, your wisdom, your anointing the rest rule and abide upon each of these council members and our new mayor, Mayor Troy Hill. Father, we bind every demonic spirit that's opposite against your will, your way, and your wisdom. Father, let Mayor Hill experience your favor, your presence, your peace, and divine direction as he leads Leander in the next season of his life. I ask you to surround his family and his children as he embarks the next chapter of their life. As for Mayor Fielder, Father, as he departs this, as he departs tonight, go into the next season of his life, let him know that what he has sowed are seeds of greatness and position this great city of Leander into an excellent, superior way. May his family know that the time he has spent and given to this city, state, and country was by divine appointment. I ask that your choice blessings be upon this meeting and the swearing-in of Mayor Troy Hill, and that you forever abide upon these council members and this council moving forward. You are the center and circumference. You are the base and the boundary. You are the center of all of our life, Father. We give you all the glory and we give you all the honor. We welcome you here tonight, and we welcome you amongst our council members, Father. We ask that your choices be upon each one here tonight, in Jesus' name, and everybody say.
Amen.
If you'll please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Scrap Tribune, please call the room.
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Settequest.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Soller. Councilmember Marcy Cannon. Mayor Christopher Fielder.
Present, we do have a quorum. We are eligible to do business. Before we move to staff comments, I want to recognize Mr. Hill. I know you're talking, I'm sorry. I apologize. I want to recognize Mr. Troy Hill, our newly-elected mayor-elect, who will be sworn in on the next official council meeting, which is July, July the 5th. Just so everybody knows the way that that process works, we have to canvass and officially adopt the votes. Williamson County will not have some overseas votes in until the 25th, which is just coming Monday, and we will, he will be sworn in at the next meeting. This is my last meeting to officiate, so it's a little bit different format, but I wanted to give everybody that update and recognize Mr. Hill and thank him for being here this evening as well. We'll move to item number three, staff comments. Are there any this evening?
No, sir.
Great. We'll move to item number four, citizens' comments. I do have a couple that have signed up to speak. Mr. Mike Sanders. Mr. Sanders, if you'll state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
Very good. My name is Mike Sanders. I live at 1016 West South Street in Leander, and thank you for this opportunity to come up and speak to the council. So two weeks ago, I came and spoke for the council, and I was given three minutes to speak, and then less than one minute into speaking, I was told to stop talking and to go sit back down. The video posted on the city website has that portion of the video muted, so it's not heard. But it's muted with good reason, because that was a violation of my rights under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Telling a citizen to be quiet and to go sit down when you don't like what he is saying is just plain wrong. That type of behavior does not demonstrate integrity, it's not ethical, and it's not legal. It would not be surprising to see that type of behavior from someone like Hugo Chavez, or Raoul Castro, or Vladimir Putin, or Kim Jong-un. But in the United States of America, we expect our leaders to listen to us. Whether they like what we're saying, or whether they don't like what we're saying, we all are entitled to our opinions. At the last meeting of the city council, I was cut off in the middle of saying words "$91 million." Mayor Fielder made it clear that he did not want those words spoken during the last meeting. In fact, during the entire meeting, not one person spoke the words "$91 million." Not one person spoke the words "$15 million." Not one person spoke the word "bond." All this while, our city council voted to approve adding an additional $15 million in debt to our already-existing $91 million in debt. There was zero discussion of whether this indebtedness could be repaid, or how it could be repaid. The decision to add over 15% to our city's indebtedness was done completely under the table, hidden from view, in a most deceptive manner. And that was what I was attempting to say two weeks ago, when I was so rudely told to stop talking and to go sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Karen Thompson. Ms. Thompson, you and I go way back.
Absolutely.
There's an ordinance in place, and it says right here, you've got a three-minute timeline.
Absolutely. And I have been told many times to shut up and go sit down, that I was speaking in the wrong place, at the wrong time, and wait till my agenda item, and so forth. So, yes, I know what that's like, but that's the way democracy works. Sometime, a person comes along that is the perfect person at that time and place, and for the mayor's job, that perfect person who came along was Christopher Fielder. His vision, skills, and leadership have been exactly what Leander needed during his time. His accomplishments during his term as mayor have been a big benefit to our community. And yes, he has told me my three minutes is up, and I have never been told that what I'm saying is wrong, it just might be in the wrong place at the wrong time. So I have to go back and evaluate how I'm going to speak, and so forth. But never has Mayor Fielder, even though he's told me many things that I didn't want to hear, he held his ground, and I've never felt that I was discriminated against, or felt or treated any different from anybody else. And I think that's what we all have to recognize, that there is a system in place for us to learn what we're doing, as well as recognize what our elected officials have done. I've had nothing in the past during his term but good results from the city employees. I've had, I've argued with Wayne Watts many times, but that doesn't mean that I wasn't heard, and I didn't always get my way. I rarely get my way. But being a citizen and able to speak is somewhat rectifying of all of those little laws and results that I have to put up with. I don't know that the land that I'm on, the little dab that's left, I don't know that it's evaluated correctly. I feel that it isn't, and I want more of it in the floodplain, but we can't always have our way. And I just want to thank the mayor for his job, his work, non-paid, he's not getting any pay for this, and I appreciate the job that he's doing. I appreciate the new ladies. I look forward to coming to council meetings and seeing more lady faces. And, see, I'm down to 22 seconds, which I just hate. I just hate seeing that. But when my time is up, I will go sit down. But I have to thank you, Mayor Fielder, for the work you have done and the time you have given to the citizens. And I know our new mayor is going to do the same thing. He's going to work hard for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I've never seen you time that down to the exact second, so thank you.
That was good. Lots of practice.
I am too. That's everyone that I have signed up to speak. Does anybody else wish to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Mr. Shawn? If you would, Mr. Shawn, state your name and address for the record, and afterwards, if you'd fill out a card form, please.
Absolutely. Jason Ashawn, 1825 Wolf Dancer, Leander. I just want to come out, come up here and say thank you for your leadership during this time. I got to spend a little bit of time with you, and I appreciate the leadership that you not only showed for our community, but that you showed for me as well, taking me under your wing, showing me the ropes, introducing me to a lot of people so that I could continue to build as an individual and as a better council member. It's hard to follow what Ms. Thompson said. She said a lot of great things, and they're all right. The community will miss you, will miss your leadership, will miss your guidance, we will, but we'll continue to prosper from the things that you've done in the last three terms, two terms, three terms, that you've served. And I just want to thank you. I appreciate it. You've done a lot for us, and I hope that the next mayor and the future mayors can step up and do the same that you've done.
Thank you, sir. Very much appreciated. Would anyone else like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to Section 5, Recognitions, Proclamations, and Visitors. I have several visitors, several, a couple of proclamations we're going to do, and before I get too in-depth of that, Mr. Musgrove, there's a young lady in a pink outfit out there. Can you grab her? Oh, no, she's right up here. Ava came up here. I'm sorry, thank you. I didn't see her came in. We're going to have a reception here in a few minutes, and we have a young lady that I got to spend some time with today, Ava Villa. Ava, come up here and stand where everybody can see you. I want to introduce you to everybody. Turn around and face them. Ava is 12 years old. She has her own baking company, The Sweetest Thing Cupcakes, and she actually baked all the cupcakes for the reception tonight, so we're very thankful for that. She wanted to know if the mayor used a gavel, and so during our time together this afternoon, she got to come up and wrap the gavel a few times and see how that worked. So I'm excited to have her, and always happy to have another entrepreneur business in our town, whether it's one person or 1,000 people. So thank you for being here as well. I want to recognize three individuals who have been very special to me, and I'm going to ask the three of you to come up. The joke before the meeting is, how many men of the cloth does it take to save Mayor Fielder? And my pastor, Pastor Horn says, we don't know yet. Still working on it. But I want to recognize, I had three individuals that I approached that gave me guidance. I spoke with, texted with, had conversations with one of them every week, at least every week. Sometimes I spoke with all three of them in a week throughout the entire time that I was mayor. And I kind of formed an informal committee and put them on it without them knowing, and then told them they were on it, the mayor's spiritual advisory committee. And these three men, and it's been just as simple as a text, as a phone call, and it always seemed to come at the right time. But I want to recognize my pastor, Mr. Peter Horn, if you'll come up, Peter. And my adopted pastor, Pastor Mark Brown, Pastor Brown, if you'll come up. And my third pastor, Mr. Joe Bob Ellison. And we still don't know how many it takes, but we have these three. I have a special, I have a special recognition for you. I asked, so there's another thing going around with staff tonight as to when I'll start crying? You've had this conversation, Peter, in the past. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Shepherd to read the recognitions that I have for you three men, and I'm going to come down, I've got something for you.
So you can still watch him to see if he cries. This certificate hereby honors Pastor Mark Brown and Pastor Peter Horn and Pastor Joe Bob Ellison. In sincere gratitude for the assistance, guidance, and friendship you've given me over the years, you've led by example, set the bar, and made a lasting impact that I will always cherish. Your counsel has been invaluable to my success as mayor of Leander. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future, one of my favorites, Jeremiah 29:11. This certificate is issued in recognition of your steadfast availability and service as a member of the mayor's spiritual advisory team thereof, this 21st day of June 2018, in Bring it in.
A lot of things go on behind the scenes that people don't know about. This is, I'm here in the middle of your gathering. I've got a couple of other guests that we have with us tonight. Mr. August Alvarado, the district director with U.S. Congressman Carter's office. Mr. Alvarado, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Mayor. Congressman Carter senses regrets. He wishes he could be here giving you these two gifts, but it's my honor to go ahead and present them to you on his behalf. The first one is a certificate of special congressional recognition, Mayor Christopher Fielder. This flag was flown over the United States Capitol in your honor. Thank you for your dedication and selfless service to the city of Leander. Here's a certificate. So a lot of folks always ask you, was that flag really flown over? And here's the. Yes, sir, please. So the next one is a congressional record. And just for folks that don't understand what a congressional record is, it's something very special that he gets to stand up in front of the speaker, and it is, it's the proceedings of the House, and it's entered into record, and it's, for always will remain at the library of Congress. So as long as there's a United States of America, this record will always be there for your family to go and view and see. And this is a replica of it, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. Congressional record, House of Representatives, submitted into congressional record by Representative John R. Carter, Texas 31st Congressional District. I commend the extraordinary work of Chris Fielder, mayor of Leander, Texas, who will retire on June 21st after serving his beloved community for 11 years. Chris's leadership, vision, and commitment to doing what's best for his city have made Leander a great place to live and work. Chris served the growing city of Leander as a council member from 2007 through 2012, and mayor from 2012 through 2018. During his tenure, he unselfishly gave many hours to the good citizens of his community. As a true leader, he has always shown great respect and support for both staff and colleagues, as well as a willingness to make tough decisions. He championed property tax rate reductions, obtained voter approval for general bond election propositions, improved local government transparency, oversaw large capital projects, and initiated the development of Veterans Park. No one can doubt that Chris has made a real difference in the lives of residents. His work is a model of sensible governance that puts people first. While Chris isn't tired of the privilege of serving as Leander's mayor, he knows that everything has its season and that it's time to allow the next generation of leaders to take to the stage. Retirement from office won't give him much idle time. He'll fill his days managing his business and spending time with his beloved wife, Mashawn, and their two children. I'm glad civic-minded leaders like Mayor Chris Fielder are working hard to improve their communities. He's led Leander to new heights and positioned his beloved city to progress into a bright future. I salute his work, congratulate him on his retirement, and wish him nothing but the best for years ahead.
All right, we're going to see who wins the bet. Mr. Tony Dale, our state representative.
I might lose the bet. I'm not even part of the bet. All right, thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, Chris. You know, I do have a resolution for you as well, and I'm going to read it. But before I do that, I just want you and everybody else here to know that there was never a time where we weren't able to get in touch with each other or talk to each other about whatever's happening here in Leander, and I really appreciate that open communication that you had, and you always put the best interest of the city first, and I'm going to miss working with you, but you've done a great job here in Leander. So I have a resolution from the state of Texas that says, whereas the Honorable Chris Fielder is concluding his tenure as mayor of Leander in May 2018, drawing to a close more than a decade of exemplary service to that city. And whereas first elected to the Leander City Council in 2007, Chris Fielder went on to serve as mayor pro tem from 2008 to 2011, and in 2012, he became mayor. Over the past six years, he's helped the city navigate a period of rapid growth, during which time, the population has nearly doubled and the city's land area has increased some 14 square miles. Mayor Fielder's tenure has witnessed many significant achievements, including reducing the city's property tax rate every year, initiating the development of the Veterans Park, obtaining voter approval for all of the 2016 general bond election proposals, overseeing the widening of Hero Way West, the largest capital project in Leander's history. And he's a member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Mayor Fielder is also affiliated with a number of other municipal advocacy organizations. And whereas deeply engaged in his community, this esteemed Texan serves as president of the Brushy Curie Regional Utility Authority from 2010 to 2013, and he has additionally held leadership positions on the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center and Open My World Therapeutic Writing Center. Moreover, he belongs to the Norton Moses Masonic Lodge and the Austin Scottish Rite Theater, and he is a valued congregant of the Hill Country Bible Church, Leander. And whereas Chris Fielder and his wife, the former Mashawn Alexander, celebrated their 19th wedding anniversary in March 2018, they are the proud parents of two children, Haley and Christian. And whereas by providing thoughtful leadership and effectively representing the interests of his constituents, Chris Fielder has ably guided the city with an eye to the future, and his efforts has helped make Leander an even better place in which to live and work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Chris Fielder be commended for his outstanding service as mayor of Leander, and that be extended sincere best wishes for the future. And signed by me, and I also have, since you're such a great Texan, we flew a flag over the Texas Capitol in your honor as well. So we brought, Mayor, I've got three copies of this resolution, one for the city to retain, and two for you and your family, so you can choose whichever you give to the city. And with the mayor's permission, Ron Aberzis, are you, can you come forward, please? So Ron, as you all know, Ron recently left council, and, you know, I think it's remarkable because a person with a last name like yours getting elected is a special kind of person. And God bless you. But, you know, Ron, so we share a little bit of the same kind of background, planning and zoning in city council, and I loved watching your work here in city council, and I'm very appreciative that you were able to come here tonight and that, Mayor and council, you'd allow me to recognize Ron, as he leaves council as well. But Ron, we flew a flag over the Capitol for you too, and I just wanted to make sure I could present it in front of your friends and colleagues here, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Representative Dale. Thank you both for being here. We have another special proclamation tonight. Proclamation recognizing July as our Parks and Recreation Month. I'm going to have the Parks Department and the director come up, if you would. Park, you'll bring your group up, please. And we have a special proclamation that Councilmember Navarrete is going to read back there in the back.
Okay. Whereas the Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Leander, and whereas parks and recreation activities are vitally important to establishing and maintaining our quality of life, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of Leander and our region, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and natural areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community by improving water quality and protecting groundwater, by the prevention of flooding through the improvement of air quality, by providing vegetative buffers to development, and by producing wildlife habitat. And whereas the city of Leander is home to approximately 450 acres of parkland, including current and future parks, and whereas city of Leander recognizes the benefit derived from parks, natural areas, and recreation and activities. Now therefore I, Christopher Fielder, mayor of the city of Leander, Texas, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Leander, and encourage residents and visitors to enjoy the parks, trails, and programs that enhance our community quality Thank each and every one of you. I love working with you guys. You're all awesome. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas, did you have, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Very nice proclamation. These are the folks that just go day in and day out, and they give themselves weekends, nights. Gosh, they're just incredible group to work with. As you get to know them, a lot of you have, you'll find out they're a very special group of people. That's not all of them, but it's majority of them. So we do a lot with what we have, and we make things work, and we appreciate all your support and guidance as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. We love you guys.
Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, I'm going to, Mr. Thomas, I'm going to call you back up real quick. I'm sorry. We have a special event next week going on, don't we? Week after next, isn't there some, isn't there some national holiday or something coming up?
Two weeks from yesterday. So, yes, Liberty Fest. So everything's pretty well ready to go. I know Heather's back there like shaking her head, no. I can feel it behind me, but no, she's done a fantastic job, along with everyone else back there. They have put together incredible lineup of entertainment, music, kids' zone, vendors, food vendors, craft vendors, all kinds of stuff. So we're going to start it, kick it off around 3 o'clock. We'll end with fireworks about 9:15, and then we'll have a little bit more music till around 10 or so. So I hope everybody comes out. It's going to be a fabulous time, and we're so looking forward. Despite what Ms. Bridget Brant says about the weather, it's going to be nice. I guarantee it.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Perfect.
That's right. Well, we're on kind of the last item before we take a break and have a reception. This is a recognition of service, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kegel.
Sir, thank you, Mayor. So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna show a video, and then we'll have a few more words and some parting gifts, so Mike, whenever you're ready.
I didn't approve this, did I?
No, you did not. You know, I've worked directly for seven different mayors as city manager, and then in my entire career, worked, I don't know, 15 or 20. And I gotta say, hands down, Mayor Fielder's the best in every aspect of the job, and it's truly been a pleasure.
So sometimes people, when they ask for advice, they want people to tell them just what they want to hear, but Chris was always that guy that would tell you exactly what you needed to know and what you had to hear in order to make that issue or problem better.
You know, he's really put in his time for 11 years, and he has not once wavered in his commitment and dedication to the city, and I just really admire that.
Whenever there's an issue that affects the citizens or the people that he cares most about, Chris leads with his heart, and that impresses me. I consider Chris a friend, and I consider Chris a mentor.
He makes Leander a place people want to be. He sells it, he loves it, he believes it, and he lives it. We love that.
Mayor Fielder, it has been an honor and pleasure serving you. Out of all the mayors I have served, you by far have the most infectious laugh and smile that can immediately make someone feel at ease. Thank you for your friendship and your leadership. From Dara.
Mayor Fielder's a people person, as a park professional, I love that. He's at all of our events, our ceremonies, our park dedications, ribbon cuttings, he is a star, and he has his own baseball card to prove it.
The man does his homework, he's always prepared, and he's always thinking ahead. The Gold Bouillon Depository is a perfect example. He did, he looked into it, found out they needed a gun range, suggested we pair him up with the police department here, and I think that really helped tip the balance in our favor.
As a fire chief in one of the fastest-growing cities, having the mayor's vision to use as a guide has made my job easier in knowing that he supported us as we worked together as a team for that vision.
Chris not only has been serving in the city of Leander for over 11 years, he's been my friend. And I can only say that he has a big heart in both relationships. His relationship with the city, he cares about the city, and it's shown in his work and in things that he's accomplished over his time. He also shows in his friendship to me. I can personally say that he's put that same effort and friendship that we in him share.
My name is Ron Swanson, and I'm gonna tell you everything you need to know about the miserable, screwed-up world of local government.
You remember six years ago, we were facing the mountain of death that was increasing each year, and water rates that were gonna explode, and we couldn't maintain our streets, and we didn't have any sports fields for our youth.
You got nothing, nothing, and if you were a man, you would've done it now.
Well, we did, and we did it with little to no trouble, and we sliced the tax rate bigger than any city in the state over the past five years. Mayor, you know, the problem I have with you is that you made this look way too easy.
Easy, peasy, lemon squeezy.
All right, Mayor Fielder, pretty soon you're just gonna be Chris again. Don't make me use these. For five years, you've had a special ringtone on this phone. I'm not gonna say what it is, Darth Vader, but...
I can't breathe in this thing.
Chris, here's the secret to success. Know when and how to add, subtract, multiply, divide, because when life is simple, life is good.
The less you do, the more you do. Let's see it pop up, pop it up.
I'll tell you what I'm not gonna miss. I'm not gonna miss you leading off the State of Leander City address with stranglehold.
Also, I know where your cookies are, so I get them now.
I thought you were trying to lose weight.
Lay off me, I'm starving.
All right, Mayor, I've got a very special gift for you, your very own seat on our city bus. So you're welcome to join active adults as they travel through Texas.
My whole life, I don't get no respect.
I know you're gonna have what you think is gonna be a bunch of free time coming to you, so I was just thinking about maybe this time, every Thursday night, we'd come by and do a fire inspection.
This has been a test of our emergency preparedness. There is no fire, it was only a simulation.
What?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that while you're mayor, all your ideas are great, but in five minutes, when you're no longer mayor, we still welcome your ideas, you have some great ones, but you also have some that we might tell you suck.
Don't say a word.
But we love you anyway.
Randy, you never looked like this, because you never had a good side. Thank you for your service, and thank you for Photoshop.
Surprise! Chris, we just want to say how proud we are of you, and thank you for being a part of what Leander is today. Your endless hours have not gone unnoticed, and we want to thank you for that.
Dad, it's gonna be pretty good having you back at the good old household.
Hey buddy, even though I'm gonna be gone, I'll always know where to find you. I'm watching you.
One more thing, you need to find something to be doing with your free time, so you're not at home making me nuts.
Love you.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, we gotta, make sure this thing's turned on. We have another letter, kind of got this one out of order, but let me read this one to you. Dated June 15, 2018, to Mayor Christopher Fielder. And it is, I'll just say who it's signed from to start with, Ted Cruz, sincerely Ted Cruz, United States Senator. Mayor Fielder, it's an honor to join your family, friends, and the city of Leander in thanking you for your 11 years of remarkable service as Mayor of the city of Leander. Your work has earned the admiration and gratitude of Texans and left a lasting impact on our nation. We share a belief that every American has a duty to give back to their community, whether at the local, state, or national level. Your achievements and contributions during your remarkable time as mayor have been of tremendous benefit to the city of Leander and the Lone Star State. You have distinguished yourself and your commitment to your community, and helped make it a place that thousands are proud to call home. Your exemplary performance and professionalism have ensured that you remain, excuse me, as one whose work will have a lasting impact in Leander and the state of Texas. As you look forward to the next phase of your life, I hope you are richly blessed. If I may ever be of any service to you or your family, please do not hesitate to reach out. Sincerely, Ted Cruz, United States Senator. We have a few gifts here, so just bear with us, but this is a street sign, not a street name yet, but it's his own special. Fielder Way, 2018. And now we have a plaque with gavel and your mayor's coin, which is very cool, and I don't think you can get this gavel off of here, but... Yeah, this is beautiful. It's not just typical plaque, I'll show you in just a minute, but presented to Christopher Fielder in appreciation of outstanding service, significant contributions to the city and city staff, and an unfailing commitment to the city of Leander, Texas while serving as mayor from 2012 to 2018. All right, and last, and you'll probably think most important, I have got a certificate here, but not just any certificate. Staff and your friends have collected enough money for this certificate, and I'll just read it to you. To Mayor Chris Fielder, thank you for your 11 years of dedicated service to the city of Leander. In recognition of your service, we are proud to present you with this gift certificate for one single full membership to Crystal Falls Golf Club, valid from this date, Thursday, June 21, 2018, until September 30, 2019, and it's signed by Grant Collins. And that's a valuable certificate, we had to collect a lot of money for that. It wasn't just given away. So I believe at the end, the mayor has a video, so he doesn't lose the bet, he's gonna show his video for his last words. We've already shown our video, I've got a few things, and I think we may have some, if anyone else wants to say anything, we'll let you do that before the video, and then we'll take a short break for those cupcakes I've been waiting on. Just a couple of things from me, I'll try to be brief. Some of you that have been around local county government for a long time may know about the Athenian oath, and if you were an Athenian when you became 18, you took this pledge, and I'll read it, because I think the mayor embodies this, and I may lose the bet here, but here's the Athenian oath. "We will never bring disgrace on this our city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws, and will do our best to incite a like reverence and respect in those above us who are prone to annul them or set them at naught. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty. Thus, in all these ways, we will transmit this city not only, not less, but greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." And I think all the things that you've heard and seen tonight, he's lived up to those ideals. This was a very, very different city six years ago. We've got so many new people in town, they don't, they take it for granted, and as well they should, that's fine, but this city was like an infant that just crawled out of its crib and suddenly was racing in the Olympics, is about the way we've progressed over the last six years, and it's been amazing, as I said, that Mayor Fielder made it look so easy. But things could have turned out very differently, we could be in a very different spot right now without that leadership, and lots of great decisions along the way, lots of leadership through an incredible amount of change, and many of you that live here may not realize it, but we're looked up as an example throughout the state of the way to do things right, and we're mentioned in many other places in incredibly positive terms. So, Mayor, that is about 99.9% due to you, it's been an incredible pleasure and honor, and I meant those things that you said, I've served with a lot of mayors, and you're by far the best, and I appreciate, more than all that, I appreciate your friendship and helping me out through really rough times, I think probably a lot of the employees can say that. That's one thing that's been spoken a little bit about here, but you don't realize how many of the employees the mayor knows. You walk anywhere to any department, and he knows them, and he knows their family, and you don't get that way without caring, but also without spending a whole lot of time. So I could go on, and I know some other folks may want to say a few things, but you will be missed. Thank you.
I am gonna go first. I don't, I don't have years and years of experience with Mayor Fielder to draw from, but I can tell you that in 2012, right after he was elected mayor, he reached out to me, and he didn't know me, didn't know anything about me, and expressed that he thought it would be good for me to get involved in the city and, you know, volunteer to serve on some board or commission here. And I was super excited to hear that, because I was kind of looking, I was, we moved here in 2011, I was looking for a way to get plugged in and learn more about our city, and I was very grateful for that, so I appreciate your graciousness in making me a very welcome new member of the city of Leander. And as time went on, I learned to love this city so much, and I understand why people move here every day, I do, because there's a heartbeat here that you can feel and you can see in people's eyes, and it's infectious. And I think a lot of that is because of your leadership. I know from my observation, that's what I accredit it to, and I just want to thank you for not only being a good example, but for being kind of the welcoming committee to so many people that have moved here and called Leander home, and I hope that we remain friends and we still get to see your shining face around town, and that you guys will stay in Leander too, because you're very valuable here, so thank you.
Thank you.
I've had the honor to serve Mr. Fielder with Mr. Fielder for quite some time. He is still mayor, he'll always be mayor to me. That's what I plan to call him for the rest of our days. I won't get too long-winded, but we had a wonderful going-away party celebration, celebrating Chris and his service to our city at that time. I was never worried when, I've served for a very long time here, and I think I first started in '05, and back in '09, again, but when Chris was at the helm, I didn't, I didn't have to worry so much, you know? Leander's seen some tumultuous times, you know, a little strife there, here and there, and with, when Chris came along, he calmed that. He brought people together, people to work together, and look what in the world we have become. I pray that continues with our city, and I've served with three mayors, and I can't tell you, I am, Chris is by far, hands down, the best mayor we've ever served with, he's, those are huge shoes to fill, and the city is a better city because of it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your many years of service, Chris. You've been here a long time, as far back as I can remember, since I'm pretty new here, since 2010, and I sincerely wish you and your family well, and in your future, and hopefully that's here in Leander, right?
You bet. Thank you.
I know I'm the new girl here, but, you know, I've been a resident since before your first term as mayor, and I've seen all the wonderful things that have happened to the city, and I know that that doesn't happen without great leadership. So thank you very much, and thank you for your guidance this last six weeks, you've been a good gentleman. Thank you.
So to avoid losing a bet, I've got a video of my own here, and then we'll take a recess. Well, I'm here today before you, a little over 11 years since this journey started. When I was first sworn in, I was 39 years old, and my kids were four and seven. My daughter just graduated from Leander High School, and my son is starting his sophomore year. The city was approximately 20,000 people. HEB opened the month of the election in 2007. We are now fast approaching 60,000 people, and have been named the fastest of any city over 50,000 people in the nation. When I took office, we had one fire station, we will be opening number five station later this year. The police used to handcuff offenders to a bar that was attached to the floor because we didn't have a jail cell. Now our police department is over 50 people and a great facility. Our city had been something like 11 city managers over a 13-year period. I tell you this because I'm often asked why I ever ran for mayor to start. It was actually very simple. I just wanted to... I just wanted to make a difference in someone's life, and I wanted to make a difference in the life of our city that I would be proud of. I'm not sure if I've done this, but it is what I strive for. I also made a commitment to God that if I was put into this position, I would share His word anytime I was put in front of a group of people. If any of you have ever been to a speaking event of mine, I hope you found this to be true. I've been criticized for it many, many times. To me, it just tells me that I accomplished my goal. I give all the glory to Him, who's blessed me many times over, and who has blessed our city. I want to thank my wife and my family, my wife, Michonne, my kids, Haley and Christian. And without your support, I've never been able to do this. My wife always said if I ever had a mistress, it was politics, because it took me away so many nights and such a long period of time. You've been my strength in my life. I know that you suffered to help me fulfill my dream. Thank you is not enough, but I will say thank you again. I want to thank our staff. You see, I did none of this. We did this together. The success that I had was because of you. You, the staff, are what made this happen, not me. While I received a lot of the credit, but if it were not for you standing with me, we would have had failure. We've been through new life together, and we've been through death together, with the passing of old friends and family of directors, the passing of our former mayors we worked with, our former fire chief, Jerry Williams, and my friend, our former city manager, Biff Johnson. Biff was one of the first people to encourage me to run for office, and stood with me until the day that he passed. I want to thank our finance director, Robert Powers. Mr. Powers, for always just having an open door and not being afraid to offer suggestions. I treasure our friendship, and I know it will continue for a very long time. To Pat Romack, our public works director, Pat, you always showed me great respect. He's one of the most professional people I ever met. People have no idea what you do for this city. Thank you. To Paige Sines, our city attorney, for always being there to help keep me out of trouble. It didn't always work, but you knew that I knew that you were looking out for me. The biggest compliment I think you could have given me was just this past week when you said you were proud to be part of my team. Thank you. To Mark Tunnings, our parks director, you know, wow is kind of all I can say. What a blessing to have you here. We instantly clicked and became friends. I look forward to many more discussions with you, both you and your wife embraced my family. Thank you. To Mark Willis and Eric Zeno, our economic development department, I know you brought me in on deals that you didn't have to. Mark, you've been a new spark of light that we needed for a long, long time. And Eric, you and I go back a very long ways. I love you, my brother. To my friend Wayne Watts, Wayne, you mean so much to my family. We consider you part of our family. There are few people you can call in the middle of the night and know they will answer. You are one of those people, my friend. Thank you for all that you've done for me, my family, and this city. To Mike Newell, it's been only a short time, your influence and touch are all over the city, yet you very quietly sit back or stand in the background. Thank you for all that you will continue to do for this city, and you've just made us a little better. To our fire chief, Chief Bill Gardner, Chief, I feel like we've been to the top of the mountain together. You've trusted me to be close and in your inner circle. You were one of the first people here at the city to ever put your arm around me and just say, "Hey, don't worry, it'll be okay, I got your back." I will never forget a day that I had that was very bad back in 2010. When I got home, you were already there. You were on my back porch, ready to talk and support me. I'll never forget that. Thank you, I love you, I know you're a lifelong friend. To Chief Hayes, our assistant police chief, thank you for always saluting me when I walked in. You know you didn't have to do that. I told you many times you didn't have to do that, but you always did. You always showed me respect, and it meant a great deal to me. And anything I ever asked, you were always right there, above and beyond. To our police chief, Greg Minton, Greg, I look up to you so much. I've never seen a person who leads by example more than you do. You are the one who challenged me by reminding me to always ask myself, "Am I doing the right thing for the right reason at the right time in the right way?" The bond that we have formed is lifetime, it's lifelong. People don't know that the day after I was elected, you were the first person I came to talk to. You're a leader among your peers. I love you, buddy. To Tom Yanis, our assistant city manager, you take so much heat because of me and this council, and it's not right. You've always been open to working with me and towards making the city the best it can be. I'll always have a comb waiting for you and look forward to our long-lasting friendship and conversations. Thank you is not enough. To Bridget Brandt, you were always open to suggestions. Our chamber director, we looked out for each other. You came into the city like a fireball and have made a difference. The respect you gave me and freedom that you allowed me has just been awesome. I hope that I have somehow been able to help you with your dreams the way that you've been able to help me with mine. To Dara Craftree, Dara, you're a special person. As someone I speak with almost every day, I'm going to miss that. I may have to just call you from time to time, so I don't have withdrawals. I always feel good about talking to you, and you always make my life in office so much easier over the time that you've been here. Again, you're a very special person. Thank you. To my friend Kent Cagle, Kent, it's been said that you are like an onion. Many layers, and not a lot of people get past the first couple of layers. Thank you for allowing me to get a little deeper than that and get a little, few layers deeper. Thank you for teaching me to think just a little bit bigger, and thank you for sometimes just saying no. People have no idea how much respect you have among your peers and from this staff. I know that we have a lifelong friendship, and we've been through some of the same things together on a personal level that a lot of people might not understand all of it. You are one of the strongest men I know. Proverbs 27:17 says, "As iron sharpens iron, so does one man sharpen another." My city family has definitely sharpened me. Kent, I know that you have made me better. To my council, family, and the people I have served with, to Andrea Navarrete, Shannon Shepherd, Michelle Stevenson, Ron Abruzzese, Jeff Seiler, Jason DeShawn, Simon Garcia, Carl Wade, David Sebold, Shel Cantwell, Kirsten Lynch, you have all reminded me that we are our brother and sister's keepers. We are willing to be successful or fail together. You would hold me accountable, but also stand with me. We did this together, I think each and every one of you. To the citizens of Leander, thank you for trusting me for over 11 years. Every dream I ever had has come true 100 times over. The thing that I'm going to miss the most is the daily interaction with council and staff, because many of you have become like family. We've watched our family grow together, and we've watched my family grow together. And again, I thank you. I did a little math. Over the past 11-plus years, we've had roughly 400 meetings, of which approximately 225 of those I presided over. To the best of my knowledge, I missed only five of those meetings. And out of the five, three, I was representing the city at a national or state event. I want to congratulate and put my hand out to the new mayor, Troy Hill. Troy, I wish you all success, and success more than I've had. I will pray for you, I will be there if you need anything from me. I'm the only person that knows what you're about to walk into. I want you to know that your staff, your directors, and your fellow council members are your biggest asset to being successful. I congratulate you, and I look forward to seeing the success that you'll bring to this city. Again, Leander, thank you. May God continue to bless each and every one of you, and may God continue to bless Leander.
Thank you. The time is 8:01. We're going to take about a 15, 20-minute recess. There's cupcakes in the back, and we'll be out to visit. Thank you. The time is 8:21. We are going to reconvene and move to our consent agenda. This is an action item, council.
A motion to approve with amendments.
A second.
There is a motion and a second with the amendment of the minutes. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. We'll move to item number 15. These are public hearing action items. Number 15 is conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case 18-CP-002 to adopt the Leander Hills Concept Plan on one parcel of land, approximately 16.19 acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Travis Central Appraisal District, partial 355109, generally located west of the intersection of Summit View Drive and Long Hollow Trail, Travis County, Texas. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a public hearing on a concept plan. This is a re-subdivision of an existing single-family lot that's in the western ETJ in Travis County. This location map kind of helps orient you to its location. This is Round Mountain Road, and so you can see it's out here. The applicant is proposing to take an existing 16-acre lot and subdivide it into four single-family lots. It does meet the requirements of the city subdivision ordinance, and the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing last weekend. They unanimously recommended approval of the concept plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Great. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing none, we're going to move to consider action on subdivision case 18-CP-002 to adopt the Leander Hills Concept Plan on one parcel of land, approximately 16.19 acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Travis Central Appraisal District, partial 355109, generally located west of the intersection of Summit View Drive and Long Hollow Trail, Travis County, Texas. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion made for approval by council member Stevenson, with a second by council member Navarrete. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Move to item number 16. Conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case 17-CP-008 to adopt the Hidden Mesa Lot 40 replat concept plan on one parcel of land, approximately 7.42 acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Travis Central Appraisal District, partial 353649, legally described as Lot 40 of the Hidden Mesa subdivision, and generally located at the eastern terminus of Mesa Oaks, Travis County, Texas. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also a public hearing on a concept plan, and it's also a re-subdivision of an existing single-family lot. Y'all will be familiar that this lot was recently annexed and zoned for single-family rural. The proposal is to take this existing 7.42-acre lot and subdivide it into seven single-family lots. And there is one note on the concept plan that you might have seen, that this is dependent upon the right-of-way of high lonesome being dedicated to the city to provide public access to this, and that process is in process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the concept plan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yanis. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to move to consider action on subdivision case 17-CP-008 to adopt the Hidden Mesa Lot 40 replat concept plan on one parcel of land, approximately 7.42 acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Travis Central Appraisal District, partial 353649, legally described as Lot 40 of the Hidden Mesa subdivision, and generally located at the eastern terminus of Mesa Oaks, Travis County, Texas. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion made for approval by council member Navarrete, with a second by council member Stevenson. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. We'll now move to our regular agenda, item number 17. We're going to receive a presentation from Austin Peters Group Incorporated regarding the results for the compensation study for 2018. Ms. Ignat?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, Austin Peters Group is here, and they're going to present the findings of the compensation study that we did. Please note that there will be no action required on your part. Back in November of 2017, HR went out for a bid for a compensation plan, a certification pay study, and a policy. And Austin Peters Group was awarded that contract. Typically, about every five years, we'll go out for bid to ensure that, number one, the city remains competitive with their salary grades in the marketplace, and that a greater number of talented applicants will apply for open positions which will complement our current staff. Typically, our ranges, the years between when we do get a study, we will increase the men in the maximum range of our salaries by 2%. The minimum is typically the amount that a new hire will be brought in as, and then the maximum is the highest level that the current employee can receive while in that grade. In the future, we'll still continue to need to increase our minimum maximum ranges so that we can still remain competitive. And most of the time, these do not affect the employees that are, we currently have by changing the minimum maximum ranges. What's important to note, though, is that each year, an employee gets an evaluation, and it's processed through our performance evaluation system. Employees that receive a satisfactory or better rating will get a merit increase. For many years, we had COLAs, but over time, we've no longer continued to use COLAs in our performance versus now, excuse me, currently, we don't have COLAs in place. An employee must earn a merit through his performance versus the city just giving a flat rate of pay to each employee. In 2012, Austin Peters Group was awarded a contract to develop job descriptions, compensation studies, and related matters. And we currently use the performance evaluation system they recommended back in 2012. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Beth Tatarco and Becky Crowder.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, let me introduce myself and turn this so I can see it. We appreciate being here very much, and Mayor, I want to recruit you to come live in my community after hearing those wonderful accolades. I can't tell you, I think Becky and I would both concur, this is probably the best-ever city council meeting we have ever attended. I know I can say that hands down, and we've done many, many.
They're not all like this, and I'm retired.
Wow. I mean, we were, this is spectacular. Anyway, congratulations on your service. You obviously served when we were here in 2012, and you're familiar with the work that we did back then. My name's Beth Tatarco. I'm glad to be here. Thank you all for having us. Becky Crowder is here also. Becky's in Overland Park. I happen to be in Fort Collins and making the adjustment to the humidity level here in Austin, obviously. We've done about 120, 140, probably 150 projects very similar to this. I don't know who said this earlier tonight, it might have been Kent, but quite honestly, Leander's name does come up among the peers that we work with, the other cities. The complementary status that you have is exactly what we hear as well among peers, and so that was no surprise to us when he referred to that. I want to talk for a moment. We have done a lot of studies. Our background is in this area. I don't think you need to know our bios, because the mayor told me I couldn't read everything in the report since he was celebrating his tenure tonight, and that I should get to the highlights, quite frankly, is what he said. I'm kidding. Anyway, so I want to talk a little bit about our scope. We were charged with three very specific areas in the RFP that Cindy mentioned, and one of those was compensation analysis, which we did, along with the market study and pay plan. We also looked at certification pay and your policies. I know that you guys have documents in front of you. You have a lengthy document with some appendices. What I thought I'd do is just hit the highlights and the recommendations, and then take questions that you may have regarding the- that you may have regarding the process and the study. So with that in mind, we started the process, meeting with department heads, finding out what had changed since 2012. A lot has changed, quite frankly, and we were here at that time and talking with them about changes in their positions so that we could understand where you are today and make sure that when we go out and look at the market, we're making good comparisons. Something unusual, we did use all city positions in the market study. That's an unusual step. Leander felt like they wanted the most comprehensive study possible, and that's what we provided. So every job in the city was included in the market study. And in that market study, the other items that we asked about and gathered information about had to do with health, retirement, leave, and other items. In total, there were about fifty-five questions in the survey that went out to your peers across Texas. And we also asked education, certification, and assignment items, another one hundred and sixteen items in the survey. Now, you might think no one responded to us, but through persistence and dedication, they did respond to us, so we're pleased with that. The survey's a point in time representing dated for January first of 2018. We did have nineteen respondents to the survey, people sending us all of their information for their cities, their positions, and we also have Bureau of Labor Statistics data to add to what we know. Those survey respondents include this list. As you could see, it's a long list of nineteen respondents. We worked on matching positions with jobs and matching positions with your positions throughout all of the positions that the city has using data and information that these cities provided us. In total, there were about four thousand data points that we looked at, and that represents the one hundred and eighty-one positions times nineteen respondents and their data. It is one of the more comprehensive studies we have done, and that is what the city requested.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Would you mind just tell them a little bit about how the city of Austin was used in this comparison?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kent. So as you can see, the city of Austin is on this list, and the way that their data was used in the survey was for those competitive entry-level pay positions. And so as you're competing for a firefighter, police officer, we were able to use their data in those areas, not necessarily for Kent's position or department head or even your higher-level management, but it's those entry-level jobs that you're competing directly head-to-head for the city of Austin with. Thank you. So the development, our charge was to make sure that your pay ranges were competitive and to develop those pay ranges so that we make sure that you are in the market, able to, what Cindy said, recruit really talented people to make sure that they stay in the city, they come to the city, they consider it a place to work. Obviously, you have a lot going on for you, but pay benefits, the environment, all those things create a total package for an employee. And so the pay ranges that we proposed in the market and that we looked at was moving Leander or making sure that Leander is at the sixtieth percentile of the market. And so when we look at the market and what does the sixtieth percentile mean, that means that if you have ten employers that you're looking at, four employers will pay more than you, and six will pay less than you, and you'll be right at that point in the market. So that's the sixtieth percentile, and that's what we're aiming for. You want to be at that point to compete. You want to be at that point to attract and retain employees, and so that's the goal that we set. Let me walk through the recommendations, and those are in your handouts. I know that on page three is the beginning of those handouts, and one of the very first things you'll notice is that in several areas, you have no changes, and I'd like to describe why that is. You have done a phenomenal job of keeping things moving and up to date since the last time we were here, and that's not an easy job to do, but you guys have consistently kept your eye on the ball, approved those raises, approved what Cindy just described earlier, moving pay ranges to meet the market. And so you'll see some areas where other cities might be struggling. Leander kept pace in certain areas, and so congratulations to you for doing that. In total, in your document on page three, the total cost of implementation of the recommendations that we've made are about four hundred and seventy-one thousand in terms of pay increases. That doesn't include fringe benefits or overtime. And those adjustments, we'll talk about where those will be here in a few moments, but let's talk about number one. In your general employee group, you've done a very good job of keeping pace and moving ahead, also in animal control and public safety communications. So those are found to be very competitive. They're overall not recommended for pay ranges or adjustments, but there's a very small group, which I'll talk about under number two, that do need adjustment, that we did find that were out of market, and those are in your document here. There's a small group of positions in the general employee group found to be below the market, so below that sixtieth percentile point that we were talking about. Those positions include the court administrator, senior court deputy, the HR director, information technology, and your Parks and Recreation Director as well. And the total cost for those adjustments will be about twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. So a small group overall. Yes, it's very reasonable, isn't it? Yes. So let me talk about number three in terms of other adjustments. What we did find when we looked at pay, and this is something, because we do a lot of pay studies that we're seeing nationwide, across the nation, is there are two major areas that we were not totally surprised by because this is what's going on around the country. In terms of pay for fire and police, those are two areas that we're seeing a lot of movement since the last time we were here. And so let me just walk through those so that you understand the recommendations here. So number one, when we looked at the fire department and their ranges, we found that they were behind the market, and so that we need a four point five percent, four point five, three percent increase here, and the total adjustment would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. So, and we're seeing that in other places, not just Leander, but that is really the state of where we are in terms of making sure that we're competitive. Police, the same situation, and, but a little bigger, in fact, bigger. We're talking about pay ranges and adjustments that equal eight percent across the board. Total cost for police would be three hundred thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. So those are your two major areas that you'll find that are in need of adjustment, along with those other handful of small group in the general employee group. The other recommendation that we had that we want to make you aware of is if we look at compression, this is always something to think about, and compression is the term used. If I'm in a position for five years and we hired someone new, are we making almost the same dollar amount? And that term is called compression. And so we want to make sure that we're paying attention to that so that we can move people through the pay ranges so that you can be competitive with people who are already here. We did find that there is some compression. However, financially, we weren't in a position to make a recommendation that you tackle compression at this moment, but we want to make sure that you're aware of it and keep that in the back of your mind in terms of items to look at. Benefits, let's just talk for a moment real quickly about that. You have a packet that talks about your benefits. You guys are in very good shape. You've done a nice job being competitive in terms of health package. The one area where your health package is a little less than your peers is your family contribution for your health benefit, and it's slightly below your peers and something that could be adjusted if there was funding. Retirement, also very competitive, and it was last time we were here as well, very competitive in that area. Leander's slightly, and I say only very slightly, more competitive in some of the leave offerings. It's really what you do for people who've been here for fifteen years, and I can't really say with a straight face that that's a big difference because you want to take care of people who've stayed here for fifteen years. So no change recommended in your leave package either. Other items, we found that in terms of philosophy, the other cities and peers in the group were doing similar things to you. They are using merit, and they are helping move people through their pay ranges with either time and position or some other factor. So people, you are representing and mirroring what they are doing as well. Merit is a factor that many cities are moving to. Certification, education incentive, we provided some details for the staff to look at and review, what kind of changes could be made, what are peers doing, and we provided that information to them for further discussion and consideration. The other thing is that we provided some pay policies also in terms of certification and incentive pay for the staff to consider as well. So with that, I know there might be some questions, and I told you I wouldn't read all of the reports, so anyway. So I'd entertain any questions that people may have.
Sorry? The way that you calculated, it was a simple averages?
No, the sixtieth percentile of the market, so it's not using the average. It's looking at that point in the market where four people are paying more than you and six are paying less. So it's not quite the average. A fiftieth percentile is closer to the average, so it's the sixtieth percentile.
Okay.
Counsel, any further questions?
Just a couple of comments. If you looked at the detail, you see while Parks was in, not Parks, the golf course was included in the study, there's no recommendations in here. We've gone back and forth on the golf course for a while, depending on, I remember when I got here, I don't think they'd had increases in a long time, and like, we've got to take care of that, but we made some progress, but now we're really focusing on getting the golf course to be self-sufficient, so they're not included in this right now, and that's something we'll have to keep in mind for the future. And obviously, there's no, this isn't information for tonight. This stuff will come back to you, and we've still got a little work, do a little massaging on some of this. Spent a lot of time working on it today, but we've got a great report and that is incredibly data-rich, that a lot of time and effort went in because this, these comparisons are not simple, and to do it right and to get good results really takes a lot of work and paying attention to the data and the answers that you get from all those survey cities. So I appreciate the great work, and we'll be, if there are any other questions, of course, but if not, we'll be talking about this in the future as we work on the budget.
For me, it was very thorough, so thank you.
Yes, Kent said, you know, very data-driven, so a lot of information.
I'm just, I'm so glad that the city has contracted to have you guys do this. I know it's a lot less expensive to take care of the employees we have than it is to go find new ones and train them and pay severance and all that stuff that happens when you have turnover. So I think this is really important, especially while our city is in such a fast-growth pace that we don't lose sight of the details, which are the people that take care of us. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from Mr. Womack for a little bit here. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider award of construction contract for the odor control station rehabilitation project to Prime Spec Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Womack?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did receive two bids and opened them on Tuesday, the afternoon of Tuesday, June the fifth, for this project. Prime Spec was the low bidder in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars for the base bid and the alternate bid work. The alternate bid work is a masonry fence, perimeter fence around this odor control station. Right now, it has a chain link with triple strand barbed wire across the top. But this project includes removing the existing obsolete equipment, installing piping to ozone production units, and a small enclosure with an activated carbon exhaust treatment unit and associated electric controls and the masonry perimeter fence with a gate. The bid of just under two hundred and seventy thousand was higher than what we had anticipated and budgeted for. There were several conditions that led to this. First of all, we'd had a lot of complaints in this neighborhood about the odor issues, particularly to the north in the Mason Ranch, and so what we did, even though it delayed design, was we monitored, we had hydrogen sulfide monitors in the wet well of the odor control station and outside, and we monitored those levels, and we looked at some of these two ozone units together separately to see what had the best performance. And based on that, we then proceeded with, the consultant proceeded with the design, and Frank Phelan is here tonight, and he can answer technical questions with Jay Engineering, but he's here tonight as well. But we worked that despite the delays. I think it led to a better project, even though it was more expensive. But we expect to complete this at the latest in mid-January, but be happy to answer any questions you may have, but staff does respectfully request and recommend award of this construction contract for the odor control station rehab to Prime Spec in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars for the base bid and the alternate work. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel?
All motion to approve. I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd with a second by Councilmember Stevenson. So further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry.
Thank you, and I did forget to mention the location. It's on Mule Deer, and it's in the area that I know several people have seen it, been there, but it's, we did some right-of-way work there for another property owner that we're just across the street to the south.
Great, thank you, Mr. Womack. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider award of construction contract to Austin Underground Incorporated for the Southwest Drive Eight Inch Water Main Project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents.
We did receive fifteen bids for this project. We opened them the same day, Tuesday afternoon, June fifth. This project basically runs along the east side of West Drive from Sunny, where the post office is, down to approximately Cali Street, maybe a little bit further south. So it's the east side of West Drive, just north of Crystal Falls. This area is prone to leaks and repairs, so we're going to go in there and put a larger diameter water line with some fire hydrants and establish better fire service as well. But this project actually came in well under budget. It's roughly half of what we had budgeted for two reasons. One, we went back and after we, after budgeting and during design, we found out that we can install twenty-five percent less line, approximately twenty-two hundred linear feet versus the three thousand we originally thought, and plus, we had very competitive bids, fifteen bidders. There were twenty-eight general contractors that actually obtained the plans to bid. So again, Jay Engineering was, Frank Phelan was the consultant on this project, and right now, we think we can finish this project either just before, hopefully, or right after, in early September, right after school starts. I think the first day of school is the sixteenth, but our project scheduled now goes to completion around in early September.
Awesome. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd with a second by Councilmember Stevenson. So further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Mr. Womack, item number twenty, if you please receive water use and supply update for the month of May, 2018.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As of today, or as of this report, combined storage in both lakes, Travis and Buchanan is eighty-one percent. That, it has continued to drop as the year has progressed. If you look at this chart, it basically shows a year's worth of historical data. If you start at this middle yellow line, that's June first, the date of the forecast, and you can go back to June of 2017. You can see a year ago, the lakes were considered full and over time, and it has decreased full and over time, and it has decreased. And then, given the inflows, which I'll mention here in a sec, just next, you can see that the trend is downward, given the four conditions. We have a forecast that considers wet conditions, median, dry, and extremely dry, but that goes out six months into the future, and you can see through the summer, the decrease, and then it starts to level off and then possibly increase as we go into the fall and the winter. One of the reasons for these lower projections are the inflows into the lakes, or better stated, the lack of inflow. This chart, it shows three different situations. It shows the historical average since 1942 in the light blue, and then the darker blue is the average from, of 2008 to 2015, which is considered a dry period as well. And then the first five months of 2018, and you can see the historical averages are considerably higher, and then this dry period here, the dark blue parts of the graph, and then 2018. Inflows in May, I believe they were about 11% of the historical average, 22,149 acre And now for the Leander numbers. If you look at the two columns to focus on are the red column, excuse me, the blue column, May 2018, and the red column, May 2017. Our peak day in May of this year was 10.77 million gallons on, I believe that's the 14th, excuse me, the 17th of May, which was a Thursday, and then last May's peak day of 8.41 million gallons was on the 14th of May. If you continue down these columns, you'll see that the total monthly production was 200, just over 258 million gallons versus last year, over 200, almost 203 million gallons. That's approximately 55 million gallons more than the last May. Continuing down, you'll see the total connections. We just surpassed 17,000, over 17,000 total connections and over 16,000 single-family connections. If you, number-wise, that's just a quick estimate, I came up with 57,702 for a population just with the single family. I didn't account for any multifamily or commercial growth with that number, but that gives you, well, commercial wouldn't count towards population, but that's, we're fast approaching Here you see the peak days in graphical form, 10.77 for 2018 and then last year's as well. To the far right, you'll see the peak day. This is a new peak day of 10.77 for now. The peak day usually occurs in July, sometimes August, but almost always more often than not in July. And then this last slide just shows the monthly totals, the monthly water use and on a 12-month rolling average basis, but the dark blue represents Sandy Creek, and then the lighter blue is BCRUA, and then combined are the orange lines. And then the dash lines are the monthly use for each plant and then combined, and then you'll see the each individual plant, Sandy Creek here, that production, BCRUA, and then the 12-month rolling averages. And as the population continues to, as our population grows, our averages and our use continue to grow, and then you can see the summer trends, the summer peaks throughout the years. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this slide and the others as well.
Counsel?
I want to, I apologize, I'm fixing to put you on the spot a little bit.
Okay.
When we started receiving those reports, it was because we were in a severe drought, and we were talking about water restrictions. So I understand that our water usage is what it is, and we're paying for that because we have access to that. So what is your recommendation on water restrictions? That would be voluntary, but what does that do to the overall picture?
Well, right now, we're in stage one, which is voluntary, twice-a-week watering. According to the drought contingency plan that we've adopted, we switched from voluntary to mandatory with counsel approval at 900,000 acre-feet of combined storage. You can see the projections. They don't, even under the worst conditions, they don't approach that combined storage, so.
Okay.
My recommendation would be to follow the drought contingency plan.
Okay. I just, because we started there, I just felt it was important to refresh that thought because it's been a while. We get these reports, and it's been good data, but it's starting to go in a direction that's kind of scary.
And we've had complaints about sprinkler systems that are malfunctioning, and if we, when we get those, if warranted, if it, we will send courtesy warning letters to people to, hey, you need to, you need to fix your sprinkler, it's watering the road or it's running two miles down the road, excessive watering, that sort of thing. So we do address the issues as they arise.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
I will note that our gallons per capita is mainly a factor related to our higher water rates, but that also serves some sort of conservation factor as well, that because it, water is what it is, that people pay attention to that cost and naturally want to conserve.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Womack. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. K.
Just one comment, um, to help, it's informed in case you get complaints, and what Pat was talking about, about not having your sprinkler spray out in the street. The Crystal Falls median project, we've not accepted that yet, it's not complete. You can see it still has some issues, and so we've been having some water on the streets, and we've got it, the contractors are working on it, they'll get it fixed before we accepted it, but it's narrowed down to just two or three of the medians now, but I'm sure lots of, lots of people have seen that.
Correct.
And it does take more water to get the vegetation established as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. We'll move to item number 21, Councilmember closing statement, Ms. Navaretti.
Again, I just can't stress, Mayor Fielder, how very thankful I am for your service, your friendship, your integrity, and everything you've done for the city of Leander. I mean, God bless you and your family, and thank you for all that you've done, and hope to see you at Liberty Fest.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Hill and I are going to do the event together, so we'll be getting out the email this week on all the, you know, things when we need to be there and all that.
Great transition. That's awesome.
Yes, I just want to point out Cindy Higginite doesn't get to be the star of the show very often, but I want to give her a shout-out tonight, especially from the report we got tonight about how on the ball you are and how you've kept up with, they haven't found too much that we've fallen behind on, and with the data and everything. I just want to compliment you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
I will miss you. I'll leave it at that. I think one of the things that you pointed out just goes so far in the data that we've seen and the growth that we've seen, and our city staff is amazing, and including our city manager, keeping us on budget, working to supply a budget that we can approve without any excess fat. I mean, it's been amazing, and I'm so grateful for you, and I know you're working on budget now, so just want to say props. Thank you.
Set a question?
I just wanted to thank everybody for hanging in there tonight and sticking with us. Thank you again, Mr. Barr, for your years of service, and hopefully, we'll see everybody at Liberty Fest. I think it's going to be a great one this year, and hopefully, we'll see all y'all out there.
Great. Mr. Hill, look forward to working with you next week, and we'll keep things moving. Councilmember Navaretti, for the last time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
It's 9:01.